Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, but if you don't go over there, just give them the call about it and make it count. Okay. I just started out of honor. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I love you, Brian Lee. And you saw him about the works. They're asking this to have. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so that's just. Basically, they're going to bring it to you from the table. And then we could go down as the. Like us to have an additional. Which I think was. So, who's raised the. Two million dollars out.
Okay, everybody, welcome to City Hall. Today is Wednesday, July 26th. Whoops, July 23rd, it was the 30th today. I'm only calling this people to order at 6:30. My name is Doug Gordon, I'm the mayor. Can we get the roll call, please?
Alex, here. Francie.
Here.
Jacob.
Here.
Huskins.
Here.
Hubbard, here.
Orange.
Here.
Mackey. Morrison.
Here.
Ferrucini. Fredo.
Here.
Swor.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Or.
Here.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Mr. Mackey, Ferrucini.
Hi. Is there a discussion? On favor?
I.
In one stamp for the flagellation.
I would like to extend my line of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British States. On the way to the ground, in the peaceful, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Counsel President's floor.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
opposed? We're going to public comments, so everybody, you know, a lot of people here today, but three minutes each and start with your name and word for your address. You're on.
Ms. Fulton, I'll work for. Two years ago this month, I was asked by the Prince of the Andertine Museum to help them with a strategic planning process. Because they heard that the city was going to issue an RFP for the Andertine Museum. And they wanted help not only to be prepared for the RFP, but to kind of develop a plan so they could quickly implement and move forward and make headway. And we went through that process until we found that the city was going to issue an RFP. They were going to kick it down the road away, so it's going to happen after the first year. Then it was going to happen sometime in June. And then, so two years have passed. And the city spent more than $120,000 on the warehouse. And history 98520 continues to wait. One of the priorities on their list was to acquire a building, an annex building, that would allow them to move the bulk of the collection into the annex building so that the 118 building could have as many exhibits, as much exhibit space as possible. Because trying to store all of the collection and the exhibits can wind up with smaller exhibit space. So anyway, they, they did reach out and they identified various buildings that were good potentials. They talked to property owners, but because nothing ever happened, they had no status, so nothing moved forward. So at last night's budget workshop, I listened to you and you're all looking at cutting the dog. Animal. To how do we come up with money? If you could issue an RFP, and a year from now, you'd be saving $72,000 a year. Would you guys do that? Because really, that's what we're talking. If you look at the risk reward on this, if you issue an RFP and the museum is managed by a nonprofit. Then. What's the risk to the city? I mean, I understand, boy, we got to have attorneys involved in this. But really, what's your risk? I want you to think about that. And, and again, you've got that potential to, one, take the headache of what I'm going to do with the museum and put that on somebody else's plate. And two, empower that nonprofit to help you solve a $72,000 problem.
Plus, you have to continue later. You have to, you have to, your time's up, you have to continue.
Okay. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Oh, there's the buzzer. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. So now we'll go down to the consent agenda with Council President's floor.
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the July 23rd. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry to be nitpicky, and I wanted to thank for kind of navigating these meetings lately and taking notes and doing the minutes. I just wanted to amend the minutes reflect my no votes on the decommitting of $1 million, the lobby funding. Usually when Becky does it, she's secure, like, well, so I would just send them both. I would just like it noted in there that I was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And any more discussion? All favor?
Aye.
opposed? I don't really have a mayor's report coming up, so, and I'm sorry that I'll do better. Thanks, Council. What's your pick? Do we have any council reports? Let's all quickly, okay, staff reports, administrative findings?
Mayor. And. We will be spending the month of August working with the Utility Rate Advisory Committee, and we plan to bring something to you in September. First meeting for consideration on the agenda today is a discussion to post a workshop on the 17th so that you can engage fully in a discussion on the EMS rate and the recommendation by the URAF. And then the hope is that you will, we will come to a vote on the 20th. So it will be a busy month. August will be a very busy month for us while we have to take this legislative recess. So feel free to reach out to any of us during that time if you have any questions on anything. Also, in front of you, you have a memo, as promised, that is the state auditor's opinion regarding ownership or transfer of museum artifacts. You'll please read through that. We hope to bring that tabled item back to you in September for a little, for consideration. And so, yeah, we will bring that back to you. Are there any questions regarding the reporter? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any directors with the actual report? All right, findings. Council President Praver.
Nothing to report.
And so you'll be standing in for Council President Ferrucini.
We have nothing to report as of the minute, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go down to public works, Chairperson Francie.
Yeah, I just want to bring people's attention, but street trees will likely be going back in September on Market in First Area. And to when people are traveling through the area, we should focus on the stop signs and what they say underneath. Because the, the lights themselves will be back in September. And let's move on to our, I. The question is, the council to author is the city of Minnesota to enter into a contract with Jenna Mandel, who is in a training with the Van Ness Belgium. I mean, would you accept this request?
Second.
Again, second, is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All people have a purse? Thank you. And then we'll go to special and stand eye to the Council President's floor.
We have a request to approve a city council workshop on Wednesday, September 17th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the recommendations presented to the council by the Utility Rate Advisory Committee. I will not question the report. Second.
Is there any discussion on this report? All in favor, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure there will be a team that's likely available for that meeting. Okay.
Any more discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's go and click the back of public comment. Would you like to finish your comment?
Yes. I'm still the same person.
Oh, did I miss something?
That was executive session at that to public comments, yeah. It's important on the agenda.
So I guess, you know, my, what I'm trying to say here is we are having a hard time financially, or we have the potential to have a hard time financially as a community. And, you know, if you, if you look at your mission statement, it says that, it ends with, that you will be good stewards of our natural, cultural, and economic resources. And handing off the management of the museum gets two out of three on that. The other thing, you talk about your vision. And in the vision, you talk about partnerships, engaging in partnerships. And this is the partnerships where both sides win. And it's been two years. It's, you know, it's time to put this thing to bed. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Anything really good at the order? Okay, all right, so. Your motion, you go into executive session.
I move to read the executive session for up to 30 minutes. Our terms not anticipated after the session. The purpose is relative to RCW42.30.110. For litigation or legal risks of proposed action or current fantasy agency has identified when public discussion of a litigation or legal risk is likely turns on and not versed legal or financial consequence means.
There's kind of first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll return at 7:12.
Oh yeah, I tell it to you.
Can I get a motion to reconvene?
We just started.
What we did in the second, okay. Is there any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the party.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so we're back.
We had a motion to adjourn and it was seconded by me.
Oh, okay. Call in favor.
Aye.
Return. Thank you very much.